Let's be done.
There we go.
I would like to call the meeting of the common council on Wednesday, April 6th to order, and we'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome.
Stroh Bush.
Here.
Van Bler, come.
Here.
Isaacson.
Here.
Lannan.
Here.
Leonard.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Well, to get started here, public comment, any? Chop.
April 16th is the party department's pancake breakfast from 7:21 and also from 10 to 11 is each great month at my apartment.
All right. Anything else?
Recognition of you is up?
Yep.
So I got something for you, or we have something for you.
Oh, wow.
Little plaque. So do you want us to go here? Come on here, maybe. It's a plaque for your service to the city of Amory. We're very thankful for all that you've done over the last four years as mayor, but everything you've done throughout your whole lifetime in support of the city. So we thank you for your service.
Hold on.
I'll wait. All right. You need a fancy carrying case?
Never review my writing paper.
Well, thank you, everyone. You wouldn't drop it. It's been a, oh, it's been a road and I think I'll leave it.
Pardon a pun.
Yeah, it's been a real long road. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a good job, Paul.
So, okay, thank you. As we move on, we got consent agenda items, city minutes from the city council, March 2nd, 2022, zoning board of appeals, March 22nd, 2022, and committee of the hall, March 22nd, 2022.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number one on the agenda is Jay Griggs, airport manager. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. There's a lot of new faces around the table, all the way around here, and a few old ones who.
Experience. I noticed that earlier.
I'm not looking at Rick. I'm going to be retiring at the end of the month after 20 years as the airport manager, and so I thought it would be appropriate to stop by and give you a brief report on what's, what we've accomplished over the last 20 years and also a little look at what the future holds. And I'd encourage you, if you have any questions, why feel free to interrupt me as, as we go. And I'm not, I don't have these things necessarily in order, but they're just some of the things that have, that have happened. One of the first things we did was we, we were able to get federal funding to purchase a credit card system so that all the pilots coming to the airport could put their credit card in and buy fuel, and that, that transferred the operation of the fuel from me to the city. So the city now pays for the fuel, the airport manager orders it and takes care of it and, but the city pays for it, and when the card goes in the slot, the money goes into the city's account. And so the city makes the profit on the, on the fuel sales. We had a major land acquisition several years ago. We acquired about almost 20 acres of land on the north end of the airport, and we did a fairly major hangar expansion project there where we added another taxiway, and that included eight new buildable lots for hangars. And also, we have room there now for, for four more taxiways and 20, total 24 more hangar spots. So you're, you're good to go for quite a long time now into the future as, as the airport grows and the area develops here. We also, we had three major projects over the years where we've repaved all the surfaces at the airport. So the first project, we did the taxiways and the new area, and then we did the ramp and the, and the long taxiway. And then we did the airport, the runway itself a couple of years ago. And in all of those projects, we, we install LED lights so that that's a fairly significant savings for the electric bill for the city running the lights. We more recently relocated the airport beacon, that's that green and white light you see going around, and that's how pilots find the airport at night when they're flying around and their GPS doesn't work or something. But anyway, that used to be on a hill near the airport, and we paid the landowner a lease rate each year for the right to have that beacon there. But it was pretty old, it got to the point where I wouldn't climb it anymore, and then Rick took it over and he climbed it once, I think, and he decided he didn't want to climb it anymore. It was a World War II vintage beacon, I think they used it to shuttle airplanes to Russia during the war. But anyway, we brought that on the airport property now, so the lease has gone away, and, and it's a new state-of-the-art beacon with the latest electronics. And it's also, it's a single pole, and it's designed so it can be laid down for servicing and changing the bulbs, so, so there'll be no more having to climb up to the top of the thing. So then we, we did a couple zoning things. We passed a height limitation ordinance, which protects the airport from any obstructions, towers and things like that, windmills that might go into the flight path, which would affect our airport approaches, our instrument approaches. And we want to protect those approaches because that's what allow pilots to get in and out of the airport in bad weather. So we got that done, and we also passed the airport zoning ordinance, which is, takes it a step further and protects the airport from developments around the airport that might not be compatible with an airport. One, of course, being residential, you don't, you don't want to build a bunch of houses next to an airport because the next thing you know, the people in the houses will, will object to the noise. And so it has, it has some guidelines in there for if you do build a house, you know, in that area, you use extra insulation and insulated windows and things so that the noise won't bother you. It also controls light sources and other things that might affect the, the airport and the safety of the pilots. We had a major disaster back in 2005 in September when a tornado went through the airport. It literally went right through the middle of the airport. It, it tore off half of a hangar on the west side and destroyed, I think, seven or eight hangars right through the middle of the airport, and, and also took out, I don't know, seven or eight airplanes were totally destroyed. So that was a huge, huge loss. It took a couple months to sort out all the debris removal and all the insurance claims. Over the years, we've hosted a number of events at the airport. We had the Austin Healy Club from Minnesota, put on an autocross event out there on the taxiway and the ramp where they'd set up cones and drive their little sports cars around them. And they, they did that two times a year for a number of years, and they paid the city a rental rate for using the airport property, and of course, they had their own insurance and everything. And so, so that was kind of fun for people to come out and see the cars. There's some pretty exotic cars were out here. Years ago, it's no longer happens, but we used to do the community demo derby out there. We built a demo derby pit, and we, rather than ask the FAA for permission, we decided we'd ask for forgiveness, and they caught up with me after two or three years, and they do an aerial review of the airport to make sure we're in compliance and that nobody's encroaching on our land. We did have a farmer at one point was planting some corn on part of the, part of the southeast corner of the airport, but they said, well, what's that big depression? I said, well, that must be where an asteroid landed. So then the next year, they did the review, and they says, well, how come you put bleachers around that? In case the asteroid comes back. So they've actually caught up to us, but they were kind enough to let us drop a contract and continue to do it. And then, of course, the same year that we went through the contract process, they decided not to hold it anymore. And we also did a, there was a truck pull. We did a truck pull out there for a few years as community events. And then, of course, we've, the Emery Pilots Association has hosted an annual pancake breakfast out there for years and years, and that, that still continues, and I think they've involved the Boy Scouts now help out with that and make some money for themselves. We also dealt with a plane crash back in 2007. We had an airplane go down in the woods just south of the southernmost hangar. Fortunately, no one was seriously hurt. The airplane was obviously destroyed, but the only damage to the airport was some branches and, and then the effort of getting the airplane out of the trees and, and recovering it. Back in 2003, we put on an open house with an air show, and that was, that's a pretty, pretty intense project because the FAA has a manual about that thick on what you have to go through to do an air show. You have to reserve space, and you have to have, the pilots got to be so far away from the runway, and they have an envelope they have to operate in. And, but we had a nice air show, a friend of mine, Pete Talarida, who's an air, air show pilot, came over and did a nice show for us. And of course, that was, back then, we still had a couple of the jets here, and so they, they converted a lot of jet fuel into noise for the benefit of the crowd. And, but it was a lot of fun. We've been pretty good at keeping track and getting our federal funding for a number of projects. Those three projects I mentioned were all in the neighborhood of about a million dollars. And airports, smaller airports throughout the country get $150,000 a year in what's called AIP funds, Airport Improvement Project Funds, and you can accumulate those up to four years. And so, and then when you get ready to do a big project, they'll find some other funding to make up what you're short. And so we, we were good at getting all of that. I got along pretty good with the lady down there, she's now retired, who handed out the money. So we, we both played guitars, and so we had things to talk about, and, and so we, we did good there. And our last expenditure of airport improvement funds was for snow removal equipment, and we, we spent about $420,000 and got a new front end loader, which is available for the city to use. Once they get the runways plowed, they can use it in the city, as long as we don't talk too loud about that to the FAA. And, and then along with that, you know, it came with a bucket. We got a snow blade, and we got a big brush so that we can use that for debris and light snowfalls. And then we also got a big diesel-powered snow blower, which is a nice asset to have for, for the airport especially, because you can blow the snow away from all the lights out there. And I got to back up a little bit. Most of the, most of the projects we've done have involved either 2.5% or 5% matched by the city. So those million-dollar projects only cost us a couple, 2% of that amount. That credit card system, we, that costs a little bit less than $20,000, and the city paid $450 as its share of that project. And that was recovered the first year in the profits that we made from the fuel sales. The SRE equipment, it was $420,000, and the city's share was just under 20,000, a little over $20,000. So we've accumulated a lot of nice amenities out there without a tremendous amount of cost. And we're getting some more free money from the government. This CARES Act is just sending out money to everybody, and there's three phases of it. The first phase, when I looked at it, I thought it was 13,000, and I applied for that, and that check should have come in here, should be coming fairly quickly. I applied last May, and it got stuck in some file somewhere, and I finally got it shook loose down there. But in the process, he said, oh, no, you got $30,000, not 13. So now we have another 17,000 that we can apply for, and we can use that for basically anything, for buying fuel, for, you know, fixing the runway, and even use it to pay the airport manager's salary or other, any other salaries. So kind of free money. The only thing you can't use it for is matching other federal funds that they give you for projects. There's two more phases of that coming. The next phase is 13,000, so that must have been what I was looking at before. And the third phase is 32,000, and it'll be pretty easy for us to claim that, especially since we can use it to buy fuel and just about anything. The hitch on the phase two and three is that we had to have a mask policy officially in place to meet the terms of that, and we didn't quite have a mask ordinance in place, but we did have a mayor's proclamation that was officially adopted by the council. And I sent that into them, the, our engineers, well, he thought that would qualify, but we still have to wait for the higher-ups to approve that, but hopefully they will, and we'll be able to claim those additional funds. So that's a kind of a bit of the history. Going forward, we're right at the point where we need to redo our master plan. That last one was done in 2005, I believe, and we started that process. We had a meeting last August called a scoping meeting where you, you, you meet with the engineers and the airport commission, and, and some of the others were on, on that same kind of a Zoom meeting. And in that meeting, they decide what the scope of this plan is going to be, and what they're going to cover, and what areas they're going to work with. And it's a lot bigger deal than I think it needs to be, but, but it's expected to take a couple of years to do that. And, and the next project I had in line was to build a, a building to store the snow removal equipment in, but they won't let us do that until we do this master plan. So I've argued and argued with them, that it's crazy to take a brand-new piece of equipment and let it sit out for two years while they do the planning when we know we're going to build that building anyway. But I haven't been successful in that. So, so the project, that, that master plan, it will also result in a new airport layout plan, which is a plan for where things go on the airport, where future growth is expected, where we'll build different things. And so that process has started, and I, and it's a good time for me to step aside and have local people kind of, kind of do that. The airport commission will be heavily involved. There'll be a series of probably four or five meetings and a public meeting so the public can comment if they have anything to say. And during that process, I, I think some of the things we'll talk about, you know, obviously, we want to get this SRE building going so that we can get that equipment inside. And then I think kind of the next thing after that is to build some kind of a terminal building. We have a little pilots lounge out there, which the airport pilots group has done a pretty good job of keeping it as neat and clean as you can, but it's a very old building, and it's actually not even its own building. It's sandwiched in between two hangars with common walls and, and a roof that leaks pretty bad now, we just found out here. So, so I think a terminal building would be appropriate, and that would be a place where there'd be a pilots lounge and some restrooms for the, for the pilots to use when they come in, and, and an office probably, you know, and hopefully, when that comes along, we can also attach a hangar to it that could become a revenue-producing situation for the city. And you can use federal funds for revenue-producing facilities now. That was, we were the first ones in the country to figure out you could use that to put in this fuel system. Once I asked a question at a meeting, and the guy said, yeah, I think that would qualify, so we applied the next day, and, and now it's fairly common for the FAA to fund those at other airports. But hangars, they're also doing, it takes some planning and organizing to do that, but, but I think my vision would be that at some point, we'll, we'll build a terminal building with an attached hangar. And then the SRE building, you know, normally is a separate building, but we've also talked about maybe combining that so that the back half of a back part of it could be an SRE building, wouldn't even really have to be heated. We've got heated space at the county shops. If we need to work on the equipment, we can take it over there. It's not that far to go. And so that'll be something they'll be talking about as they go through this master planning process, which is intended to cover the next 20 years of plans. So, so we're moving, moving along on that, and I think that'll be a good thing for the city. I think the airport is a, a good asset for the city. There's a lot of towns and cities that would love to have an airport, and I think it'll become even more important as you develop your, your industrial land, which is actually adjacent to the airport. I know Paul has been working hard to work those two together and work some federal funding for that and to work out maybe exit and entry roads that would make it accessible. And, and, and airport is a big factor sometimes when you're attracting an industry, because if they need to fly back and forth or fly to their other locations, why, they want a town, obviously, with access to an airport. So, so I think that'll be a good thing. Last thing I had, you know, in terms of replacing me, I think the airport commission discussed and has recommended that Dave Toftness replace me. We got a little, the cart a little before the horse. We were thinking that was going to happen right away, but we're going to slow down, I think, and make sure that there's no one else out there that would like that position. But I just wanted to add my recommendation along with the airport commission's. Dave has been a lifelong resident of, of Amory. He's an Amory High School graduate. He was, he's been a pilot since 1969. He used to fly out of the airport before the current runway was even built. He used to fly when the taxiway was the runway. And he owns an airplane, he owns a hangar at the airport. He's been active in the pilots group for all those years, and he's also, more recently, he's, he's taken on on his own, setting up weekly little coffee social sessions for the pilots. And, and so he has a definite interest. He, obviously, he doesn't have experience as an airport manager, but neither did I when I started, and he has the advantage that I'll be around to help him and teach him and show him the ropes. And, and I didn't have anybody to really do that for me. But so I think he'd be a good, good candidate. I don't know that there'd be anybody else in Amory that would be more qualified. So I just put that recommendation in. And, and the only other thing I'd like, you know, I want to publicly recognize Deprandam over the years. She's been very good at taking our minutes and getting the public notices in the paper and handling a lot of the busy work, and I really appreciated her help. She's been very good at all of that. And, and then, of course, the airport commission. You know, Rick has been on it for years and Paul, but those guys, many of those guys were on that commission when I started, and that's like 20 years ago, and I don't know how long they were on there before that, but you've got a good dedicated bunch there, and they've been great to work with, and they, they do love the airport and are willing to work hard for it, and I, they'll be a big asset going forward as you do this master plan. And then finally, the city council. Some, the city has been supportive of the airport all along. They never rejected any recommendations that we made over the years. They've been willing to pony up the matching funds for the different projects we've done, and, and that's a big deal. And I just wanted to say is personally, I really appreciate that support that we've had for the airport. And I, I get within my 10 minutes, I, I had a few extra minutes going in because you were ahead of schedule. Anyway, I'd be glad to answer any questions anyone might have.
Just thank you, Jay.
Otherwise, I'll get out of here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Item number two, discussion of the city center roof and painting costs. So where do we start?
We had a quote, and I went ahead and signed it because if the roof is leaking, all of the place, and we need to get it fixed.
Replace it.
Yep. Yeah, we're just going to get it fixed, replace it, get it done. So there was a few questions Paul had on there about the red and green areas. I actually called the company, and I left a message. I guess, I don't really know what that means, so once I get that information, I can get that over to you so you can see what those areas are, if they're talking about.
It looked like the proposal was just missing the map that.
Yeah. We didn't get the map, so, yeah. So I will get that to you once I can receive it.
Did they give you a schedule when they could get it done?
He said he's already ordered the materials, and it'll probably be August.
So they did your patching.
Yep. And the painting, we had a quote last year that was 18,000, but they're going to have to do some patching, so the quote will change from that original quote for the painting of the building, so it'll be slightly higher. But I don't have those numbers yet, so. I'll get those to you when I get them.
Hey, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When it comes to the roof repair, obviously, there's been some damage inside. Is there any sort of warranty on any of that? So it's just replace it on our own?
Can I answer that one?
Yes.
They only warranty what they worked on.
Sure.
And they go over these things, but completely on us.
I just know there are some parts and pieces that had been patched, and I didn't know of any of these pieces. Okay.
Stuff they did is fine.
Is there a lot of damage inside?
Yeah.
I mean, I know, obviously, ceiling tiles and that type of thing, but when we're, I haven't been upstairs since it, like, started.
I think PD suffered the most.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have three or four different spots there, and they, besides the ceiling tile area, I think, in that little area off the concrete film area, it's.
Popcorn ceiling isn't bad for the cheap rock and stuff that's. And then we're going to have to clear it on the wall, he could run behind the wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got to replace it all, all the way down. You can have moldy. Yep, you can have mold.
Thank you.
All right. South industrial park lot sale prices.
Before we move, I have to back you for a second, Jeff. That, that worked, the repairs for the body damage, is that something the city crew can do? Or do we have to get a contract?
Is there any insurance on that?
I can check into it. Let me check into it to see. Because we get what the building is insured, so we can.
Yeah, I don't know. Probably comes under flood damage.
It's probably worth looking into, just considering the scope of the work.
Exactly.
Would be worth it.
Might as well get some quotes on, for a contractor fee right away.
The repair is, I can see.
Oh, okay.
So if that needs to be repaired, so far.
Okay.
Any more discussion? South industrial park lot sale prices.
I had put in a request for opinion of value through Compass Realty, and I had left that with the owner, and she never got back to me, and I, thank you, Paul, for talking to Carrie. Carrie actually came in and gave me the opinion of value that he thought. And as you can see in your OneDrive, he said for an acre lot at the new South Industrial Park, he put a value of 52,500 per acre lot in that area. And he did compareables, I've got all those in the packet too for you. He said that's a fair price, but you could always change the prices. We're not stuck at that price. That being said, I think this type of a piece of property, we should go with them and have them listed. I think it'd be important for us because then we go in different markets and we have more exposure. So I guess, you know, depending on what you think about that, you know, what we should do in that area.
Kit C M Ellis, that way.
Kit M Ellis, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and I think also when this industrial park is ready, it'll go on the West, Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Site, so.
But we have, what, three lots of the industrial park?
Well, it depends on, on how you want to split them up. You know, it could go for per acre or how many you want to sell.
There's, what, two five-acre parcels and one, the 11 acres, is it?
Yeah, I would say so.
Yeah, but I think they only did that so they could plat the road. I don't think we're tied to that.
Yeah. But I, that's how big the piece of ground is, though, so somebody, because an acre isn't very much if you want to put up a, you know.
But, you know, we've had interest of somebody, they looked at maybe two acres, you know, or, depends on how you want to sell it and if you want to list it.
The first one that comes gets the, gets the choice of.
Yep.
Yeah.
So would you be opposed to us doing this to have them listed, or would you think we should? I think we should.
Need a mo, need a motion then, probably.
Is that our realtor's choice?
Right. There's more than just one reason.
That's my, that's my question. So do we go out and check with others and see what they say?
I mean, I know that they've listed the majority of the property that's recently been for sale, but.
And we do have a contract with one of our lots right now. This would not have a contract yet, so I guess. This would not have a contract yet, so I guess we need a contract to have them listed.
Yeah, they were, for all our properties that we have listed, maybe it was values on, they have done the preliminary work for this. So I think if anybody, if we do go outside that range of Compass with Kerry and Ally, that we should probably have it reevaluated by the people who could get the contract. So I, there's kind of a sharing thing there.
Yeah, and.
Provided a free service for us, so.
Yeah, and he did this on several others where he gave us his opinion without charging us any work, so.
There's some value in that.
There is, yeah.
Anyway, we don't have to do it right now, we got it.
Yep. You know, think about it and give me some direction.
Well, I don't have a problem with it and I think the sort of get these lots out there or knowledge out there that they're for sale.
Yep. I think so too.
So do we need a motion on that?
I would think so.
Well, I will make a motion on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Proposed RFP for building inspector.
So I had a question on this because I'm sure this came up a year ago at this time. And I thought at that time there was, I don't know if there was either a motion or it was discussed for a significant period of time that unless there was an issue, we weren't going to go through this every, on an annual basis.
So the last discussion we had was at the, in December, because Dan's contract's going to be up. And we decided to move it to May when we just do all the reappearance at once. So the RFP that I basically took from Brad Ushane and changed it, everything will be due by April 28th, so that all the qualifications will be given to you guys at the May meeting. But yeah, to your point, there was a lengthy discussion about that. I think it was a special meeting in December.
So, you know, I, you know, two concerns. First of all, you know, I deal with the inspectors on a daily basis and REM does as good as anybody and better than most, I think. But we also got then a RFP for an airport manager, which is appropriate because we're changing, I know we're changing managers. But then do we have to have an RFP for basically, you know, anybody who does various things for the city on a, on a semi-regular basis or a regular basis? So I think that's a good door to not kick open, just because it makes a lot more work for the council. That, that work is not there. But you know, if there's, if there's issues, I think we need to get them out in the open. If there's not, I don't see a problem.
I think, I think the question is, is at what monetary limit do we need an RFP? You know, is it any project that's over $10,000 we need to throw for proposals? And maybe if we, we establish those limits, then city staff will know, you know, make those adjustments.
Because, because from that standpoint, Jay probably costs the city more than the building inspector does because he's funded by building permits, right? We don't pay him anything if they, if we don't get any building permits in the city, we don't pay him a like, do we? Yeah. Gee, you're too high-priced, Jay.
I don't hear very well.
That's good. I'm, I'm just, I'm throwing you under the bus.
Oh, good. I've got my hearing needs tonight.
Well, I think a lot of it also has to do with the term of the contract as well. I mean, what's our current term with existing with REM?
It's up in May.
I know, but what was the original term? Two years, one year?
The original one was one year and then it just auto-renews. And then we got rid of that after the first year. So now it was the calendar year until we changed it.
I think the problem was it was auto-renew and there was no review, which just, which falls on us if we didn't look at that.
And I, I think it's, it's really worthwhile to review that every year. And for any of the folks like Jay and like, you know, REM and anybody that we hired that is a non-city employee, that's worthwhile.
Which would also expand to our attorney as well, right? Because we have a contract with that. Getting, and the, if I remember the intention, December was to get everyone on the May, help cycle.
Correct. And a city engineer and all kinds of folks to do that.
So my hearing that we don't believe in this case, we need to have an RFP, then we just move forward with REM going forward. But I think, Tim, you bring up a good point. What is our limit in which triggers an RFP? Because it clears it up. Is there any state mandates about setting if there's an RFP required or competitive bidding?
Well, you need competitive bidding if it's over $25,000.
Yeah. But, but of the people we just talked about, I think Jay's the only one that gets paid. The attorneys don't get any money unless we use them. And the building inspector doesn't get any money unless we use them. We don't want, we don't want to have that RFP for council people.
But it would be nice to have a comparison also at this time.
Yeah, and evaluation is certainly worthwhile.
And we should have something to evaluate it against.
Yep.
We did have another guy that.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, there are. Right, right in this area, I think there are, oh, maybe five different building inspectors, depending on your judicial or your political area. You know, that within, within say 50 miles, you can run into any one of five of them. So it isn't, it isn't that there, that there's not any other out there, but.
Well, if there isn't any review process and there's no request for proposal, there's, then it's up to that entity to come forward if they're going to make changes in pricing too.
Absolutely.
So at least if we do this, there's a method to, two ways. You know, if costs change or things change and licensing changes and.
So maybe the contract needs to be changed to say.
Well, at least, yeah.
If there's any, if there's a, any change in it, then it has to go through.
Yeah.
Council review.
But I think this RFP process allows then for city staff to review and recommend to council instead of council sitting here. I mean, I, this might sound completely wrong and it probably is, but having somebody come here and try and convince us to pick them to be their building inspector or airport manager company or whatever service you're providing, it's, it's a waste of time. City staff should be reviewing them. They can compare the apples to apples or reduce the punches and come up with a recommendation to council for approval. You know, they can provide us with the information. So I, I think having this RFP process in there helps keep that in check, just like you're saying.
I like it because it's.
Yeah. Well, and if, and if you're going to be, be doing it for everybody at the same time period, it's, you're, you're dealing with all of them at once. So at least it doesn't get scattered throughout the year. Or wonder when they're going to be.
That being said, motion to approve the request for proposals with Building Inspection Services.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Proposed RFP for airport manager.
Same motion.
I'll second the same.
Okay. Any further discussion?
This was discussed in both.
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
No, not quite. There's a couple of things that tripped my trigger here in the last couple of days. One is our municipal parking lot right out here. And I know we can't act on it, but I wanted to bring it up. The only way to enter and exit our municipal parking lot is in a one-way alley. And I haven't set and did an actual count, but my guess is at least 90% of the people that come out of there turn and violate the one-way directional thing. So either we need to make a, I, I would mostly be in favor of an exit or an entrance onto Keller Avenue, but I don't know if the state will let us do that. If not, we need to make that a bidirectional alley or maybe we need to cut another exit right onto.
We just move the one-way sign down to the south end of the park?
I remember talking about this when we were doing the road.
Yes, we did.
And it was until the end of the parking lot, it was going to be two-way and then from the parking lot down is one-way.
So.
The signs just.
So we need to move the sign?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, and as long as we're talking about the alley, there's the two-way cars that park behind, out behind Coleman, the old Coleman building, the Northern Stiles. I watched a semi go down there and he was about this far away and he was about that close to the electric pole on the other side. So it'd be nice if those ladies would use, park a lot across the street here. So just for safety reasons, but.
That can be your last official act as a.
There you go.
The other thing that I was, that I have been thinking about is since we now meet as a committee as a whole, we don't get a chance to evaluate parks and rec and various things. Since it looks like there's going to be a change of, possibly a change of direction at one level or another in our, our ongoing process with the silent sports versus motorized sports, I, I'd like to, and there must be, I think we have some tourism money yet or that, I think we should put a sign on each trail with a large map of the city of Amory, something that was fairly well-done, that lists the, says welcome to Amory and here's where you can park and here's where you can do this. And if you want something to eat, these are our eating places in the city and maybe a little dot on the map with a number. And this is where you get fuel and welcome to our downtown where you can, you know, go to whatever.
We probably need two of those, one.
Right, one for each way. One for each way.
I wanted you to mention that because I've, I've got a meeting with the designers and you just kind of talk, toy with wayfinding signs, right? And that's perfect segue into that. So yeah, I will.
I think, yeah, it, it could be a really nice sign. I mean, you know, it's always kind of been concerning to me that you could, that we have, you know, 15, 18 ATVs come in in the summertime and they stop down there by the sign and they look this way and then they look this way and they say, hmm, how do we get from there to there? And we want, we need gas, but we also want to have a hamburger and, or we want to go to Farm Table or whatever and.
Meeting will be here next week, so I will.
Yeah. And if it was big, you know, large enough so we could make, so you could make numbers on it, something like that, if somebody, if it changes, we can either erase one or put a, put a number on it. And do we not have tourism money or is from the?
From, from our room tax.
Yes, yes.
So we have tourism.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, I'm pretty good, actually.
Well, there's, there's been a motion made in seconds.
Yes, there has been. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.